We will start with the invocation from trustee Stonecifer.
Thank you, Chair Kidwell. Lord, we thank you again for this time together. We thank you so much for the joy of graduation and what we were all able to witness and see just a couple of weekends ago. Thank you for the changes that our faculty, administrators, staff, and leaders have made in the lives of so many throughout Pinellas County. We ask that you give us wisdom as we move forward as an institution. We ask that you would fill our hearts with grace and mercy as we make the best decisions that we know possible. And it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Can everybody hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right. Very good. I guess we get going with comments, right? Graduation was a huge success. I was able to attend with trustee Stonecifer the St. Pete Collegiate High School Gibbs Campus graduation on Friday morning. It was amazing. The kids were great. And then, most of them were able to join us for the graduation at the TROP the following day. Highlight for me was our 86-year-old graduate who brought down the house, literally standing ovation. Graduation kind of stopped, and she got to bask in her achievement. Lots of great stories. Truly, I thought Speaker Rouse did a great job with his speech. All the speakers were great. Students were... That was my first time at the TROP, so a little overwhelming, but also really well-done by everybody here. Everybody had a part, and I truly thank all of you, but I was very, very impressed. So, we will...
Do you have any comments?
I'll just echo what Chair Kidwell said, and it was, I just want to thank all the trustees. It was nice to have all five in attendance for the graduation, which hasn't happened in a while, although we haven't had graduation at the TROP in a while. And thank you to everyone who planned and executed and was there for that. Fantastic.
Thank you.
We do have trustee Butts on the line, so...
Trustee Butts, any comments?
Good morning. I would just echo the chair and trustee Stonecifer. What a great day. Very proud to be a part of St. Petersburg College.
Thank you.
Dr. Williams.
Well, everyone's talked about graduation, so we know that it was a long ceremony, so we're going to have to figure out a better plan for next time, so we don't have the mad exodus that happened near the end. But it was a meaningful graduation because we had our 2020 and 21 graduates there, and so they were very proud and very pleased. I want to really give a shout-out to those who helped coordinate and organize graduation, as well as to our faculty and administrators who actually attended. It meant a lot to see you guys there, so we were very, very pleased. SBC has received a lot of accolades over the last month, but I'm going to bring that to the June meeting, because today's meeting is just a brief, short meeting for us to vote on a couple of key things at the state. The timeline is this month. So, we're going to go ahead and move forward. Mr. Chair.
Meeting is now open for public comments. Rebecca, do we have any public comment cards?
No, we don't have any public comments.
Very good. Do we have any members of the public that would like to make a public comment? The public comment period is closed.
All right.
We get to move forward with the votes.
I've been told that with trustee Butts not being present, we cannot vote.
Okay.
So, we need to find a way to get this done quickly. I don't know if we need to have another emergency meeting. Or Mia, can we vote and find out if there's a protocol? Because we've been able to do that in the past, so I just want to know, is it possible to go ahead and vote? And if we find that this is like an absolute no, we'll have to call a meeting next week just to do this.
Yeah, I'll look into it. We technically need a physical forum, so we could start with the workshop, and somebody could come later, but...
Say that one more time.
If we start with the workshop portion, and then at the end, if somebody can come.
I think Deborah's out of town, and Katie's in court, so...
They can't come. No one's in town.
Okay. I'll look into it.
Okay. So, it sounds like trustee Butts, we're not going to vote today, and we're going to have to have a meeting next week. We're present.
No problem.
Okay, we'll get on everybody's count. Wait a minute.
We can vote, and I'll look into it.
Okay. She said we can vote, and then if it's not approved, we'll have another meeting. So, hang tight.
We'll need you for some motions, trustee Butts. So, can everybody get to look at the minutes for April? If so, we have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. We have a consent agenda. If we would like to take that up in one vote, we can do so. There is a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you so much, trustee Butts. We'll keep you posted.
So sorry, it's haunted.
It's okay. We're good. Thanks. All right. Thank you so much. No, that was awful.
Thank you, everybody. We're trying to figure it out here as we go, but we're good. The call to order the BORN workshop.
All right. We're excited. We've been waiting for this moment to really look at our facilities and what's happening, and hear from our consultants on their recommendations going forward. As you know, probably for the last three years, we've been really looking at how SBC has expanded throughout the county with properties, and how we do not need those properties. And this was pre-COVID, so this isn't something that just happened because of COVID. We've really been looking at, how do we shrink our footprint and strengthen our output? And so, to do that, we need to really look at facilities and what's really needed and what's not needed. So, for the past six or seven months, we've had the privilege of working with Cushman and Wakefield to really learn what we're doing, how we do it, what facility and space do we really need, and what don't we need. So, today, we're going to hear from them on their recommendations going forward. So, I'm going to turn it over to you guys.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Hi, everyone, and keep it hard in the back of our heads for those of you who are behind us. I'm Pete Prohosky from Cushman and Wakefield, and with me, Edward Norwood from Reverend Dunleavy and his colleague Brendan Kohler. Pleasure to be with you today. We've had an amazing time working with some very, very professionally courteous and smart individuals to get where we are today. Real quickly, the agenda before you is a revisit of the project approach. I believe Dr. Williams is probably that. We're going to get through key findings and get right into strategic considerations and recommendations, kind of where you should go next, and then have recommendations or a guide for next steps. So, as Dr. Williams mentioned, we've been on board in real simple words, and you've heard this before, to kind of take your current state, map it to an end state by looking at enrollment, classroom utilization, and the age and condition of your facilities.
That's right. And one really important aspect is understanding the strategic outcomes and strategic framework for which the plan should be developed around. And as you can see on the screen, we've heard from a number of folks, over 65 stakeholders. They include board members, provosts, VPs, great students even as well, a great collection of folks. And really, we're able to kind of boil it down into three main categories that you see on the screens. Curriculum and development outcomes, developmental outcomes, really, SBC wants to focus on who the students, who your students are, making sure that you're preparing them for their local and national needs, and also, you know, focusing in on that learning environment, making a strong learning environment, whether it be online or in person. Target marketing accessibility, it really is a focus on being market-responsive, you know, being agile, as you always have been, and making sure that you're reflecting the needs of the community in the county that you represent. And then finally, from a, you know, more of a financial standpoint, looking to improve your assets, your physical assets, without really, you know, engaging in more debt or additional funding from the state, trying to figure out how you can improve yourselves without going into those resources and really kind of looking at alternative solutions to make sure that you're kind of integrating all of your campus systems as a whole portfolio. So, really, those are the kind of key standpoint you can see on the screen. There's a little bit more information, but those are really the driving aspects of our conversation.
So, what about our key findings? And we really need to pay attention to this. It's quite simple. It's a very simple slide. However, 55% of SBC's portfolio is over 50 years old, and that represents a financial cliff. That is, you will never catch up. The herd maintenance and capital repair requirements you're facing are...
Intermountable.
Intermountable. And we would tell us, anybody, IBM, Google, Facebook, whomever, that you cannot maintain a portfolio adequately that's this old. So, with that said, in turn, your classrooms are poorly utilized. So, Gordian, our partner on this, does this nationally for hundreds and hundreds of universities and colleges, to track their utilization, and with their average being 44% utilization, SBC's at 28% utilization of the classrooms. Best practice would be around 50, 55%. So, you're well behind. And then of those classrooms that are occupied, when they're occupied, they're only being occupied at 56%. So, that is two things. One, supply and demand. Supply of space, you're overspaced, or there's not enough demand, or you have relatively flat enrollment demand, what have you. So, part of our recommendations have to do with treating the supply side of space and treating some of those old buildings, which we'll get into.
So, what did we find out? So, there's, after six or seven months of working with SBC, we really identified maybe six or seven key findings. First, SBC should continue to stay focused on its mission and purpose, and focus on closing that achievement gap. I know Dr. Williams has a passion for that, and the colleges have made strides of that over the last several years. Next, picking back off Pete's comment, right now, you have a 28% utilization rate, and I like to do things graphic or visually. So, think if you were a homeowner and you had three homes, only one of those three homes not even full, the other two homes are not full at all. So, again, you're looking at your real estate portfolio in groups of buckets, already buckets of threes, having a 28% utilization, regardless of this conversation with Target, Walmart, et cetera, that the college should actually be focused on, how can we actually increase that utilization rate, really strengthen our portfolio moving forward, understanding the challenges? And we can do that through a couple of things, and Dr. Williams alluded to this once before, is adding to SBC by subtracting your footprint, adding to the college's mission, adding to accessibility, adding to programs, adding to your student experience, adding to all of these things by subtracting some of your physical footprint. Student success was a big, a key finding that we saw through a lot of our stakeholder engagements with deans and provosts, and making sure that students have accessibility to transportation, good IT coverage, technology. We've also known that just studies have shown the Purdue, no, the Gallup study came out a few years ago that showed that the student engagement is higher when students feel at home. So, again, SBC should focus on creating or repurposing spaces that really enhance that student experience. We've heard that students have different experiences, depends on what campus they're located, so trying to unify that student experience amongst all SBC students would be important moving forward. Last but not least, or last two but not least, well, HEC does not have to be remain at the same location. SBC can look at separating this nursing program into north and south counties. And last but not least, the Allstate Center, which we'll spend a lot of time talking about today, that's currently being utilized by not only local resources, but state and federal resources. However, understanding some of the finances behind that becomes a little, has become a little troublesome, so we'll actually look at how we can actually bifurcate Allstate and actually look at divesting it through a sale or a ground lease.
So, strategic considerations. Asset Management 101 dictates that when there's a core asset, a key laboratory facility, it's young, it's well-utilized, you invest in that facility, you prioritize your capital expenditures on assets that are core to the mission. Non-core assets, which include typically non-core buildings that put themselves in the non-core bucket by being old and antiquated and not functionally obsolescent, rule of thumb is you get rid of them. There's no reason, especially when the cost to renovate is equal to or close to the cost to replace, there's no reason, no reason, financial reason to keep maintaining that facility. So, what do we do with perhaps underutilized or surplus assets, including the older ones? We categorize them. You've seen this one before. Tier one, which are high-value, quick wins. We can act on those almost immediately with very few impediments or barriers to sale or ground lease. Strategic projects are high-value but a little bit more complex. You put HEC and Allstate in that bucket, and you can read about small wins and proceed with caution, but we don't have any of those, so, in terms of recommendations here for your portfolio. So, here we are. Tier one, St. Pete Gibbs Wellness Center, policy and parking lot, which is next door, HEC annex, Bay Pines and Vet Tech. St. Pete Gibbs Wellness is, I don't have to go through all these, but that's not occupied at the moment. Trustee Gibbons before brought up the idea of workforce housing, or affordable and at-market-rate housing perhaps, that SBC can make a contribution to the community through that, and we indeed looked at the valuation under that scenario. Bay Pines and Vet Tech have some restrictive covenants and clauses in them, and they're not of great high value. That has to be unwound, examined a little bit more. And then strategic projects, of course, are Abbey Center, excluding the services building. The services building is well-maintained, well-occupied, useful. But the, this building and the JWB building, this building in particular, from our standpoint, represents, it's very nice, but it's highly inefficient. The classrooms are very underutilized, and you are sharing the space with the county. That is a very, very, very favorable deal, and not so favorable to SBC. And then Allstate and HEC, which we'll talk about in a little bit. Recommendations, divest of, sell, ground lease, tier-one properties, just mention what they are. Relocate HEC programs and sell the property or ground lease. Move Allstate's programs into the main building. For now, we'd keep the gun range and driving range where it is, because that takes more strategic consideration, and it's more costly. But you can move forward, keeping those two programs on site, and then treating those separately in the not-too-distant future. Implement best practices in classroom scheduling. Gordian has great recommendations for that, and I'm sure you're familiar with those as well. And then work towards decommissioning the older buildings. We'd start with the ones that are 65-plus years old or more, and then, you know, throughout the next five, 10 years, move down through maybe the threes. Threes will be coming fours. Those are, threes and fours are the worst in your portfolio. There's a great benchmark for this. The University of Missouri has mothballed, closed, decommissioned a lot of their older buildings, and it's been considered a wild success story.
So, I think the next couple of slides you'll see are really going to dive into kind of three of the key along the strategic projects, and we'll start off with HEC. So, you heard Pete, and really what we're seeing with this campus, this center, is the value to SBC would be to sell this asset. This is not including the annex building, and that's tier-one. We're focused specifically on the HEC main building. And really, what we're looking at here is, we're looking to sell the land, sell the asset, and the reason being is, everything that we've heard from a number of stakeholders, everything you've saw previously, there is an opportunity to move the HEC programming to different campuses, and really kind of move SBC out of the, what we call the real estate game. You're not looking to manage real estate for, you know, just to manage it. And really, we believe that the HEC campus or the HEC program could be successful at other locations. So, for that reason, and you can see all the long-term outcomes as well, we believe that it'd be wise to sell that land and reinvest the proceeds of that into long-term reinvestment capital projects that would go into, you know, renovation of some of these older assets at other facilities and so forth. And from a timeline standpoint, this, you know, based off the market, you're looking at a pretty quick turnaround there. For Allstate, it's a little bit more complex. As Edward mentioned, we're looking at multiple options here, and really, it comes down to kind of two main things. One, we transfer all of the programs in the main building at Allstate to a different campus. We keep the current firing range and driving range, and we're looking, and we would look at bifurcating the land, so that there would be the opportunity for SBC to maintain ownership of those properties, or, you know, even ground lease it as well, but creating an opportunity to divide it so that there's more ability for private market to come in and really take advantage of that site. For Allstate, we are looking at, and also St. Pete Gibbs, we're looking at the opportunity between sale and ground lease. We do not believe that ground leasing at HEC makes sense, but we do believe that Allstate and the Wellness Center does make sense. We are not recommending...
Sorry. What's the difference? Between the two properties, I mean.
Oh, between the two properties, yeah.
So, really, it comes down to maintaining a presence at the site and not maintaining presence at the site. So, for HEC, we believe you can accomplish all of your goals, all of the programmatic elements at a different location, and for that reason, you don't need to maintain that site under your ownership. For Allstate and the Wellness Center, we believe there's opportunities to maintain an SBC presence there, and for that reason, we would want to explore what the value, what the total value would be for SBC to receive in that opportunity.
The question for an SBC as to whether to sell or ground lease boils down to one major factor, whether you ever need the property in the future. That's it. Secondly, what we like to do, if there is sort of an indifference or a desire to test sale versus ground lease of a site, you go to a market with like an RFQ process and collect feedback and opinions from investors as to what the trade-off would be, you know, is it apples to oranges, or apples to apples in terms of the inherent value. HEC, we believe, just does not lend itself to that scenario.
And it'll be an analysis of the cash that's needed to retrofit other campuses to move programs over.
The value of doing RFQ for Allstate and St. Pete is to, one, just get a really good indication of what's going on in the market. Again, Cushman and Wakefield's in the market every single day. We actually have the numbers on the screen right now about what some different valuations would be, or really get a true number, get a true offer, what someone would offer the college, or take a look at people's land. Do you want to have that money up for now to invest in other resources, or do you want an annual annuity for the next 50, 60 years?
We're not going to bury you with the numbers on this slide. Try to make some high-level points. We have the tier-one and tier-strategic project properties that we mentioned before. The first column is our market value estimate. Then, the second column is annual operating expense savings, if you did not have that property anymore in your portfolio. Third column for a couple of properties, you had a Castal to report renovation estimate. So, that's almost like a facility condition assessment that says you need exactly this much money to save this property, even to just basic working order. And so, the valued SBC includes those three columns because the renovation estimates, for instance, are opportunity costs that you did not have to undertake or spend. So, all in all, if you follow this path, you get to 64 to 69, 64 to 70 million dollars in value to SBC by following these moves. And then the last column is ground lease income. Ground leases work as a percent, like a return constant on the value of the property or land. Right now, interest rates have moved up, and it kind of tracks treasuries, and it's complicated, but a general constant in the market is about 6%. So, you could get that in annual income, which then could be leveraged or, you know, turned into, or they can actually be paid upfront as well in terms of present value of ground leases. But it's a little wonkish for right now, but there is inherent, the overall message here, there's significant value at play by following this plan for SBC. So, step-by-step process, mapping better utilization and creating savings, creating revenue. Step one, divest of the tier-one properties. That only brings your utilization to 34.6% because a lot of those properties aren't very populated with classroom space and what have you. Decommission buildings 65 years and older, that's the low-hanging fruit in terms of old buildings that, you know, feel free to stay in them. You're going to be spending 10 to 20 million dollars over the next, you know, eight, five, eight years to keep them going. Closing those buildings, we tested a few at Clearwater and St. Pete Gibbs, increases utilization to 42%. And then, in Gordian's estimate, you can increase classroom utilization by best practices in terms of scheduling, 3% to 4% typically, gets you to 46%. So, following that plan, you get to 46%, you create about 47 to 52 million dollars in revenue. And then, the recommendation would be, going forward, continue to look at those ranked three and four, those older buildings in your portfolio that are in need of the most deferred capital repairs, and you could get to 50 and beyond over the next, you know, five, six, eight years, following a careful asset management strategy. And then I just put for everyone's knowledge, just the cost to demolish a building, if you just wanted to scrape it or get rid of one, was $6 to $8 a foot. Or, where's mothballing? You can only spend, you only have to spend about 50 cents a square foot per year to close a building and maintain it to minimum standards. Which, you know, if you're in need in the future, then it's still there. You'd have to renovate it.
So, how do we align these recommendations to SBC's mission? First, by optimizing utilization rates, can emphasize current programs as well as future programs. Again, understanding that SBC's mission is to empower students, to get our community to empower students to get success, not only in the community, but also through economic mobility. Next, consolidating assets can actually provide a comprehensive experience. We talked about this a little bit before the beginning of the meeting, is that SBC students, regardless if they're Clearwater, Tarpin, or et cetera, you can ask five different students what their SBC experience would be, and we get five different answers. So, again, try to have a uniform answer of kind of what SBC student is, and what that experience at SBC means to that particular individual. Also, Pete spent a couple of minutes ago talking about some of the long-term operating costs. Again, by decommissioning these buildings or mothballing these buildings, it also has some financial implications for SBC, and how do you want to take advantage of those? And last but not least, if you actually sell or divest of some of these assets, what can you do with these, those proceeds? Can you use those proceeds for capital improvements, for renovating some facilities, if you're going to move some programs around, which we'll talk about in a minute? Or do you want to use those capital dollars for scholarships, et cetera? So, you have a lot of flexibility once you have that cash at hand.
So, I'm sure the question is, well, how do we move all of those programs, and where do they go? And we have taken, I would say, an initial look at it, and we've reached out to a number of our SBC stakeholders for kind of additional guidance as well. And really, what you'll see in the next couple of slides is, an estimate as to where we believe programs could go, based off of square footage allowances within your current portfolio at those campuses, and also from a programmatic efficiency and adjacency, you know, standpoint. So, these might not be the end-all, be-all recommendations, but it kind of gives you a general idea of how we can move people around. So, first off is Allstate. You can see on the screen, the main building would go to St. Pete Gibbs, you know, all those kind of classroom elements that Allstate. Remember, we said we'd keep the firing range and driving range for the time being, and then the other elements, you know, the EMT, paramedic, we believe that can go to Seminole, and then the line worker program can move to the Midtown Center.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yes, ma'am.
Would it be difficult if we could not move the line worker program to Midtown and it stayed at Allstate?
We don't believe so, because of the amount of square footers that it takes on the sites. You know, it would just kind of, it would really depend on how we were to bifurcate the properties into separate parcels for the private market. But what we've heard is that is an opportunity to move that over to Midtown.
And I think there's a partnership with Duke Energy right now, and I think some of the partnerships is that some of those facilities need to be south, and so we wanted to make sure we actually tied the actual granting facility or the partnership facility with the actual parameters of the actual agreement.
And then, one quick note, again, from the Allstate standpoint, we would... And then, one quick note, again, from the Allstate standpoint, we would look at, you know, potentially moving the firing range if we find a great, you know, future partnership. Obviously, the driving range is a little bit harder from just a space location and everything, but, you know, we would be open to looking at other opportunities there, because really, what we're looking at is, we believe that the Allstate site itself is a very valuable property, and so, the more you can maximize the investment from the private market, the better for SBC, better for the community. But, we do not want to do that at the risk of losing valuable assets like the firing range and the driving range right now, so for the time being.
Yeah. During our research, we saw that a firing range, each lane, it's cost between $1 million to maybe $1.25 million just to build a new firing range. So, again, if SBC wants to dispose of this, you can look at, actually, I think there are a couple of local partners that you could actually partner with to actually rent some space out, but again, just to construct a new facility would be just, at this point, it would not be in the best interest.
And of course, the overlay to all of this is that Allstate is a very, very old facility. That is, again, going to be very capital-intensive to maintain over the foreseeable future. That's a 65-plus-year-old building.
So, then, we'll shift gears to HEC again, and as you probably saw on the screen, another reason, and I mentioned it before, is one reason we're also looking at kind of getting out of this facility is the reinvestment costs. I believe it's $21 million, I think, for HEC all-in, so it's a pretty substantial amount. And so, like I said earlier, we believe that the programs you see on the screen can be successful at these other campuses. And like I said, we've worked with a number of stakeholders to kind of identify how they would work from an adjacency standpoint, and then we've confirmed that, you know, the square footage would be available at these campuses. Now, again, we would need to, you know, look at renovating. Obviously, if you're moving, especially HEC, some highly specialized spaces, you're not going to be able just to fit in, you know, a dental program in a non-dental space. So, you know, we would definitely need to look at what the cost would be for renovating some of the spaces, but the point is, you have the square footage that's available to you, it's just how you incorporate these changes into that.
As we pointed out earlier, SBC being good fiscal stewards, when we sold 28% utilization across the portfolio, quickly said that an idea that had come up before about a new facility for HEC, just, we would not build new utilization.
And finally, some of the smaller assets that you have, you know, again, I know Pete mentioned that there are some complications to the Bay Pines and Vet Tech properties, but looking at, from a programmatic standpoint, you know, we believe that there is an opportunity to move these around, as well as, you know, the EPI programs you see on the screen as well, or that B, I'm sorry, EPI.
So, final slide, next steps. This is how we recommend cadence and staging, obviously subject to-- Right away, your Tier 1 properties, sell or ground lease, the recommended Tier 1 assets, address the Vet Tech, Bay Pines, Easements and Covenant, shouldn't be too difficult, and deal with those as well. We believe, to follow up on the charts with the tables we just showed you in the previous three slides, source an academic programmer or space planner who really can interview the drivers of those programs and stakeholders to determine the exact needs and how they would fit elsewhere. We did determine that, based on what we showed, the math works from there being enough capacity, but that's one small part of the puzzle. And go ahead and look and invest in the centralized classroom scheduling programs. We recommend evaluating all the partner leases. The JWB building next door, $7.05 for 99 years is what the county pays for use of that building, while SBC picks up all the capital costs and the shortfall in actual annual operating expenses on that facility. Begin the strategic projects, Allstate and HEC, based on what we just discussed. This, of course, does not have end dates, this is just commencement. SBC to create asset management and decommissioning plan for older buildings. So, whether you go out and get facility condition assessments by an architect or engineer and develop a plan, but there can be a carefully staged decommissioning plan to take older assets off the table, don't have to spend the money on them, it improves utilization at the same time. And then, ongoing for best practices for the future, keep going with the implementation of asset management, you know, decommissioning plans, start to take out your older, more capital-intensive facilities, as demand for classroom space dictates.
I think it's important to note that, you know, the first bullet is really, as we've been saying, Tier 1, you could get rid of these assets, make the money upfront, and move forward as quickly as possible with those. For HEC and Allstate, there's a little bit more of, and the Wellness Center is a little bit more of upfront work that you need to do for it to really move down a certain path, and one of them being is understanding how you're going to move those programs from one to another. And so, it's a really great kind of tiered approach, so, you know, you need this step done, and then the next step done, really to kind of get the whole process moving.
And last but not least, on the asset management plan, the asset management plan, if SBC's not familiar with it, is really an iterative, basically an Excel file, to be completely honest. It shows, here's your condition right now, if your conditions were to continue to deteriorate on a standard amortization, here's what it would be, here's your revenues that you're getting in from all your different sources. How can you tie those revenues with these assets deteriorating and make continuing investments? So, it comes with, I don't know, maybe 50 or 75 different iterations that we've come up with for different clients on how to actually to think through assets for new construction, renovation, demolition, et cetera.
But, we're looking at your portfolio, and it was green, yellow, or red, the age of your facilities, you're definitely in the red category, and we would just emphasize that this is not the time to move anymore, so.
Have we, what have we done in the past? I mean, this sounds like a, I mean, this is what we wanted to see. I mean, this is comprehensive, next, I mean, this is good. Have we ever undertaken, have we just kept all the buildings all this time, and now we're at a point where it's--
Yes. We kept the buildings all this time, and we've added more buildings that we did not need. And so, I don't have any history of us doing something like this, or putting a plan in place, that's what we're trying to do now. That's why we have these great consultants here working with us, to really look at our current condition. And so, what was laid before us today is our current condition along with the recommendations as to what to do with what we have.
Public institutions are very good at owning facilities for the first 10 years, and then very, very poor at it afterward, and it's only because of the nature of what you're allowed and not allowed to do. So, in private industry, you can withhold reserves for replacements every year, in fact, lenders demand it. So, you put aside money every year, you need a new roof in the seventh year, the money's in the bank. You all have to fund all these projects out of annual appropriations, so you're competing with other interests, and so, while this is bad, you are not in, you are not alone in this category.
In the Florida college system alone, there's examples of, at Broward College, they, you know, they moved, they consolidated their downtown campus because it's all, you know, the need was greater elsewhere. They actually entered into a ground lease with a private developer, they built an office building on top of it, and, you know, they have a 99-year lease out of it. And so, you know, there is a lot of precedent for, as Pete said, public institutions looking to consolidate, you know, the real estate to really reduce your costs.
Yeah, and Chair Kidwell, I also want to add, I know some of the things and practices, well, one, in higher education, especially in the state colleges, this is fairly new with the exception of Miami Dade. It's been the attitude of kind of build, 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 and just hold. And so, actually, yesterday, I had a conversation with another person at another college and saying, how are you guys managing through this, because we have the same issue. The other piece is that, when it comes to the deferred maintenance, for three years, we did not receive some of digit dollars to maintain the deferred maintenance. So, that was being funded by capital improvement fees, which is actually coming in from, based on enrollment. So, being able to maintain it becomes harder and harder over the years when the funding changes.
Yeah, this is, this is like decluttering.
It is.
The demand for this changed 10 years ago, and we're behind the curve on getting to this point, and this is something, I know I talked to Brian Miles about years ago, and we're finally here, which is great, because this has to be done. And, you know, our enrollment started going down 10 years ago, and it took us, it took us a long time, and by us, I just mean--
Right.
--the corporate college to catch up with what that meant, and where we were really going into the future. So, this is like step 30 of this whole path we've been down for the last six years, at least, since I've been here. And what this is going to do for us is create the efficiency that we always talk about in everything else we do, right? And we need efficiency at all levels, not just in the classroom, and not just what we're doing with the students, and how we're spending our money in that regard. Having fewer real estate assets to care for allows us to invest more money in technology, making the space nicer, making the classrooms better, making the online experience better, all these things, instead of spreading ourselves too thin. And so, this is a great first step. Now is where the work gets really hard, because we need to figure out what our best path forward is from here.
It's all in here.
It is. It's never that simple, though.
Right here.
Just wait and see how these kind of-- My other question was, I know there was a lot of people involved from St. Petersburg College to get to this point. Who has seen this proposal and these next steps? Have the provosts been involved with this? Has anyone seen this yet?
They've been involved, but no one--
Have they seen this recommendation?
No, because we're bringing it to the trustees first to get your feedback, and then we will send it out, but we did not send it out. And when you do receive it, it is a recommendation, so I don't want it going out as hair on fire. I'm like, out of here, this is happening. But, I do think that--
That's my point.
We're at a, we're at a point at the institution where the choice is clear. We have to change. We can't stay in the same space as we have. We need to be more efficient and more calculated in our work. We need to be more innovative and creative, and before we say no, we need to learn how to say yes, and this is how we can do it. Because I think that we're used to being property managers, you know, let's just keep adding to the toy box, and you know, after a while, you can't find that favorite teddy bear that you like, because it's just drowned down in the bottom of the box. Well, we have too many toys, we need to streamline, and we need to do a better job with the facilities that we have, and at the end of the day, we need to fill those facilities with students, with community members, with employees, because that is how students are succeeding, by the college experience and being face-to-face in many ways. Online is great, I'm not against online. The success of online is not great. The outcome is not great. I think we're going to have to figure out how to make online as good as the on-campus success. So, we'll--
So, let's bring more people on campus by making it a nicer environment.
Right, bring people on campus, and, you know, sometimes you think about, well, how do we shrink our footprint but increase the experience? Well, if you're spread out so far, and you have five students in a class, and at the end of the class, it's only two, what kind of experience is that going to be? Just think about it. I like to be in a class with 30 people, so I can communicate and socialize and--
I like it so I can hide in the back.
I'll be your teacher, you'll be up front. But, this is our opportunity to create the next level of SPC. We're not the first institution to downsize in fiscal space, and we won't be the last. But, if we don't, we won't be here, because we'll just be property managers and we won't be growing. And so, students need to come onto a vibrant campus with activities going on, and access to support and things that they need, and to see folks. To do that, we can't be all over the county, and that's kind of, it's been great, I guess, but I think shrinking that footprint and expanding the experience for everyone, even employees, is going to be good. And yes, it's going to be disruptive, it's going to be uncomfortable, and I think that we have to learn to get comfortable with being uncomfortable. COVID has taught us that, and so, it's time to make that move. And we brought this to you first before sending it out, if there's recommendations that you have, or concerns, or things that we can make sure it's addressed. We don't want to just send something out without an approved plan.
I have one, one thing to say. I want to kind of hop on what Trustee Stone Cypher said. I want to, what do the provosts think when they look at all these arrows pointing to their campus? Like, and you don't have to say now, but I would like the input from, does it look doable? How stressful does it look? Yes, we need to change, yes, it has to be uncomfortable, but you, when you guys see this, do you shudder and say, or is it like, looks great, we need to do it, let's, you know, get on board with this? I mean, I think it's important, because you guys are kind of ground zero every day, and will be the recipient of a lot of programs here, so, you know--
They're all shaking their head yes.
It's uncomfortable for them to answer that in this room, but I know that the deans and the provosts have been intricately involved, as well as several of the other cabinet members. I think that the provosts have weighed in on their concerns. I don't think that our provosts are afraid of speaking up, neither are our deans, in sharing their concerns. I think the people who may have further concerns would be from the academic side of programs moving and things of that nature, but the provosts and deans have been involved. Has any provost or dean not been involved who's sitting in the room? Anybody not had a chance to sit, weigh in? Did you feel that you could be honest and open? Anybody felt like they couldn't? I mean, they've been involved.
I just want to add, so, in the involvement, yes, the deans and the provosts have been involved and some other stakeholders. When it comes to these particular slides, what was shared was the moves as far as programs to campuses, but also coupled with that, expressing and communicating that this is phase one. This is just the initial recommendations based on, as Pete was saying, the math and where the space was. The next phase, and Chair Kidwell, you said it exactly, is where a lot of the work comes in, which is where the provosts, the deans will be even more, that will really be the phase where there's going to be lots of discussion and input and finalizing that plan. So, that, this particular slide that's up was not, but the moves were initially with the question of, I think, any significant changes that are just not feasible. So, that was, that was what was shared with them as far as this presentation.
Yeah, we'll still look at, where on campus are we talking about? What does it look like? How much is it going to cost? Are nursing students going to go to-- There's a lot, there's a lot more to do, this is a great start, and there will be a lot of conversation around it as well.
And sorry, Trustee, the word move, too, is very mundane, right? I mean, this is also the chance to hit the reset button. I mean, for HEC, as an example, that wants new spaces and newly designed and modern and all that, this is also the springboard to do that.
Exactly.
Right.
Exactly.
And Chair Kidwell, I would share that with Dr. Vittoto's recent retirement. Even strategically and logistically in our leadership, we did not backfill that position and actually reorganized the provosts in anticipation of this, so we've been having that in our heads. And like Janet mentioned, I think the work now that we'll do based on these recommendations is go back and look at the spaces, and does the program that they recommended to go to this campus, does that still logistically make sense, or where, which campuses really align best for program moves, and having those conversations along with what happens with those buildings. If we do mothball them, do we still at some point need them and need to use some of the capital funds to rebuild at some point? But, absolutely, the provosts are on board with the, with where the college is going strategically within all this.
And this comes at a perfect time for us, because we're also working on meeting the state's standards on programs, and what programs can be offered, and how they can be offered, what programs will the state supplement, what will they no longer supplement? How do we move forward with that? And so, this gives us an opportunity to also create and re-innovate how we do our programming, what we offer, how we offer it, and where we offer it. So, it comes at a very good time. So, it comes at a very good time.
The reality of this as well, and something I'm sure we're all thinking of, is, if we truly want to be good partners with our county and with these cities that make up Pinellas, you know, having land that's underutilized in a county that's as dense as Pinellas, isn't being the best partner, and it's not the best use of the assets that we have overall. So, I think this will help build some of those relationships, too, knowing that we're looking at ways to make everything better, not just for us, but for the geographic region we live in.
It may not be apples to apples, but you mentioned University of Missouri having great success doing this. That makes me feel really good. And it seems like, correct me if I'm wrong, but we may be on the cutting edge of doing something that no other state college has done, other than.
Miami Dade.
Miami Dade. So, we could be on the, the leading edge of this to kind of get continued advantage in the state college system, because we're being innovative, but other schools have had success doing it elsewhere, you know, so.
And I would say, Trustee Kidwell, a lot of college presidents are having this conversation, so we won't be the only one. And as mentioned, it's just space utilization and need. I mean, where are we?
Consolidating.
Consolidating is our best bet, and being able to use some of those resources for other capital improvement initiatives on the campus, as we do the shuffle, the deck chair movement, and being able to bring state-of-the-art buildings and space that we cannot use in some of our older facilities right now. There's no opportunity to retrofit. I think there are some buildings we have retrofitted to the max, there's nothing else you can do. HEC is one of them. There's absolutely nothing but flatlining it and moving on. We have several that way. And so, being able to consolidate and use those resources to innovate and create more efficient, exciting, and state-of-the-art spaces, that's going to help our students succeed, is going to be critical. And that's going to be important for us. Any other concerns or ideas from the trustees on the recommendations? Do you have any concerns about the facility recommendations that were shared in tier-one, selling those properties, minus the two properties that may have some issues that we need to look at? And tier-two, where we talk about selling or leasing Allstate and selling HEC? Did I get that right?
And, and ground leasing, the, potentially ground leasing the Wellness SBC.
That's right.
I don't at this point, but there will be more questions and more things to think through.
Okay. Okay, perfect. Anything from the audience that you feel you want to make a comment or ask a question?
Just want to say thank you. I think that this is exciting, and Dr. Williams, I know you've been in the HEC building for a lot of years.
Yes.
This puts us in a competitive position, because as you know, we've had private institutions that infiltrate this market over the last 15 years. It is taking enrollment. And so, putting us in a competitive position with nicer buildings, we have a great maintenance plan, a great team, but the HEC buildings, you know, outlived its life, as a, you know, as an example. So, I think that we're all excited to be able to see that momentum and be in a position to where we can really compete.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Good job. Thank you. We're going to take a five-minute break for everybody to get coffee, use the restroom before we go through the budget. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks. We're almost there. Next step. Thank you so much.